Call the meeting to order if everybody can stand, face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have a short invocation afterwards.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Lord, we ask that you look over our members and heal our association. Amen. To begin, this is, there's a lot of stuff to process here so I'm just going to ask that if we can all work together and let us get through this as we can. So we'll start.
So on Saturday, our celebration, our holiday day celebration, multiple incidents broke out at our clubhouse common grounds area. The first incident occurred at approximately 8:30 PM and involved multiple members. Additionally, at approximately 10:45 PM, multiple groupings of people broke out into altercations around our clubhouse area. These incidents resulted in two persons with one stab wound each and one person sustaining head injuries. Multiple people received minor scrapes and cuts. Thankfully, there were no life-threatening injuries. Please understand there is currently an active law enforcement investigation being conducted through Bourbon County. The association is working with Bourbon County during their investigation and has already provided the video surveillance. Our communities were created for family enjoyment and while we may not always agree with each other, one should never choose violence as an answer. Choosing violence places every member of our community in harm's way and sheds a negative image on our community as a whole. As members, we need to find solutions to disagreements without degrading the harmony of our lakes. As an association, it is important we evaluate, learn, and put a plan in place to minimize these threats to our communities. The association will evaluate the situation and take appropriate action towards policies and any member involved with fighting during the HBL event. While disagreements can arise from time to time, the association cannot and will not allow actions that cause bodily harm to others on association property to be ignored. Our utmost concern is member safety. With that, I'll take a motion to go into executive session for 20 minutes for legal so the board can review video footage as a whole from Saturday's incidents.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, executive session, 20 minutes.
We'll call the meeting back to order. During executive sessions, we looked over the film, gathered names of the members and individuals that we could make out. You know, I'm gonna be honest with you, this is, this is pretty disturbing. Hidden Valley was doing some very good things this year. We've made a lot of business and we've had live music and all of these events, and it's, it's very concerning that something like this happened in our community. I will tell you that it was nine members, one guest, and there are two people that are unknown that we are looking for. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss what we can do in regards to members and guests involved.
You have to say your thing. You'll have to do your thing.
I'm gonna recuse myself of this section because my friends and family are involved. And I want to encourage the board to be strict, and I will follow their decision.
I will take a motion. I will take a motion to enter executive session for, what do we think, probably ten minutes?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen minutes for, we'll discuss member and guest involvement, that's for confidentiality, so.
I make a motion to go into executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss members and guests involved.
Okay, motion, second?
Aye, sec.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, executive session, fifteen minutes.
Anybody in the crowd, can you please be respectful when we are talking so that everyone can hear?
Just be respectful when we're talking so everybody can hear us.
We'll call the meeting back to order. After consideration, the board's had some lengthy conversations about what to do with this situation and how to proceed, I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion, and we'll go from there. So, I will make a motion that per Article Six, Section One of the Sugar Valley Lake Homes Association bylaws, that state, "The association's purpose and powers are to promote the health, safety, and welfare of residents within the properties, in so far as permitted by law, to do any other thing that in the opinion of the board of directors, will promote the common benefit and enjoyment of the residents of the property. Therefore, Sugar Valley Lake Homes Association place a temporary ban from association common property not to exceed one year, reviewed every ninety days on nine property not to exceed one year, reviewed every 90 days on nine members that caused bodily harm towards others." (applause) This is first 2025 at the Hidden Valley Recreation Event. The temporary ban includes all clubhouses, beaches, lakes, showerhouses, restrooms, golf courses, and parks. The ban will not prohibit members from accessing their property via association roads. At the conclusion of this meeting, the Bourbon County Sheriff's Department will receive the members' names to formally trespass these individuals from association's common property. There's the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Katie.
Since there were people there causing issues that were not members, I'm gonna make a motion. I make a motion that per Article 6, Section 1 of the Sugar Valley Lakes Homes Association bylaws that states, "The association's purpose and powers are to promote the health, safety, and welfare of residents within the properties in so far as permitted by law to do any other thing that in the opinion of the Board of Directors will promote the common benefit and enjoyment of the residents of the property. Therefore, Sugar Valley Lake Homes Association place a permanent ban on one non-members for causing bodily harm on August 35th, 2025 at a Hidden Valley Lake Recreation Event. This ban includes all association properties. At the conclusion of this meeting, the Bourbon County Sheriff's Department will receive a list of names to formally trespass these individuals from all association-owned property."
Okay. So, we will move on.
If that was a motion.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that was a motion, we'll need a second.
I second.
We'll need a, we have a motion, we'll need a second. Mike Iris in seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, moving on, we, of course, now we've dealt with members, now we have the personnel side. So now, we're gonna break for executive session, how long do we think we need?
Fifteen.
Does he have? Yeah, well, we'll have open for, if he wants to, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's fine, go ahead.
Sheriff Martin, could you speak a little bit about what we can do better as an association to keep things safe and prevent any instances of this in the future?
Simply, here you go. I'll be on Bill Martin, the sheriff, here in Bourbon County. Thank you for inviting me up to discuss this issue. The one thing that I was pretty disappointed about was that the sheriff's department had no knowledge of what was going on. I haven't received a phone call, nor even my other deputy received a phone call. I'm like, I'm a part of your band or anybody playing up there, okay? If we had knowledge of that, not the day of, or two hours before the event, but if we had reasonable amount of time, of notice ahead, we could have planned accordingly to have deputies go through, drive through, stop, get out, and walk, and show a presence there. I think the presence would have kind of deterred some of the issues that was occurring or boiling at that time, okay? The second thing is that in regard to what can be done, it's up to the board. Our deputies sometimes work part-time gigs for security purposes just like this, okay? Now, I don't know what's in your, I don't know if you have an entertainment budget, but that might be something you might want to look into, and my guys are always looking for extra money, like everybody else, but we do, at times, deputies do go out and work special vehicles or something for certain events and stuff like that. Now, I don't have a problem with it. My under sheriff who is here with me tonight, Kevin Davidson, he doesn't have a problem with it. Just reach out to us, and we'll try to get something done. So that's something to think about in the future of maybe hiring a deputy, with the deputy there present, and then us pulling through and driving through, insurance, presence, you know, will go a long way, okay? So, those are kind of the only two things that I had in mind, that passed under the line. At any time, I'm gonna open door, phone call away, we'll be sticking around for a few minutes after the meeting if you have any additional questions or anything like that, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, did I just get that sentence out, we didn't get a motion or anything? Okay. All right, so, we're gonna call, what did we think, 15?
Yes.
15-minute executive session, this will be for personnel, so if I can get a motion for that.
I make a motion to, during executive session for 15 minutes for personnel issue.
Okay, we got a motion, second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Executive session, 15 minutes.[914.93] We'll call the meeting back to order. In executive session, we discussed personnel issues. The board has come to a consensus, and those changes will happen here in the next couple days, so listen for that. Moving on, new business, event security. So part of this, looking at what we can do to change this, is figuring out what we can do different. Myself, Justin, Katie, we've all had brief conversations amongst, you know, this stuff that, in regards to the off-duty deputy going over to Hidden Valley during those events when music is there. We think there is, you have, what, one more event on the 27th?
I believe so, yes.
There's one event on the 27th that has live music. I'm just going to tell them to find it.
Yeah.
So, so the 27th will have live music, so if you have an off-duty deputy that would be willing to come work three or four hours for us that night, that would be great. You want to get ahold of Tracy for that, if you come up with somebody, okay?
Just reach out to us.
Yeah, we can do that. She can...
And free dinner.
And free dinner. Well, that's it right there, yeah. Well, okay, it was the dinner.
You need more than one?
And I think going forward, we'll probably put an emphasis on situations like that. Hidden Valley, I mean, they're a little different, you know, they don't have the Lynn Valley or Mount City right down from us, so they're in a little different position. So we'll work through Hidden Valley with this, we'll do the event security for the day of on the 27th, and then that will give us the off-season to put a plan together as far as how do we come up with providing the actual security for these events, but it's going to have to happen. I mean, there's no, one way or another, the additional security is going to have to happen. So, do we have any other discussion in regards to that? I don't think...
I think we made the point to have our security guard there as well.
Well, that's important, too, to have our security on-site as well. Anytime of, an event is going on, you know, we make it a point not to schedule our events most of the time on the same days. A lot in purpose, where members can enjoy both communities, you know, those, well, and the same thing goes for the security side of that, you know? If we expect security to be here, we expect security to be at Hidden Valley.
Do we have a security guard?
We do not have security there. Joe?
So, question. So, the security just can't come through, like occasionally, just?
They should be.
They should be anyways, yes.
Okay, so is that happening, or?
Yes, that happens. This is additional, this would be additional on top of our in-house security guard.
Right, but I just have never seen that actually come through. I just didn't know if that's typically done now, or?
Well, it is. I mean, it is done now, so, or supposed to be.
Well, we've been talking about it.
We've been talking about changes on that as well, so, I mean, that's, you know, don't think that that's gone unnoticed either, so. I don't know that we need to have any other conversation in regards to this, except I think the association's duty is to provide the security needed for its members, and we'll do everything we can to do that. So, any other comments from the rest of the board on that?
Do, question?
Okay.
Do Bourbon, I guess, to you guys, do Bourbon County officers control it at all? Like, one county does, you're right, over here. I wasn't sure if it's...
They do. They do drive through occasionally.
How that works. Does that...
Bill?
(inaudible).
I don't, we don't have your name on here, I'm just saying this.
No, I don't think so. I think, and I think the rec may be put in going forward, too.
(inaudible). About a year ago, I believe it was, six months ago, in Hidden Valley, like, sorry, I forgot to introduce you. Years ago, we had the authority on the road. Several years ago, the former board president, Andy Porter, had his mission in way, and now we have the authority on the road to support each other. Okay? Both of you lie, we can stop you, and if you fell deep lying. If you run a cop sign, we can stop you if it's issued on a violation, and go see the court. We have that authority. Okay, we have that authority, just over here. The last time we talked here, I think I dropped off some paperwork, and I left it behind, and it should be going to file with the board, so if you guys want to review that, we'll do all, we'll change it, it's a model, okay? Did I answer your question?
It did, but can I ask one more question?
All right, go ahead, Joe. Go ahead.
So, would you say you can have more spins on the roads? So, like, for instance, speed limit? Are there restrictions? Or does it have to be, like, technically, county roads develop those specific levels?
Or, I think it hurts.
Absolutely. So, I know, I know, they told us, county roads are 55, so unless they're within 55...
Well, you're looking at county roads and private property.
Definitely.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so...
So, we can inform the 20, because the board at the time gave authority to enforce private laws, so you're 21. Now, speed, and also, did all of it...
We're willing to. Okay, thank you. So, so now, moving forward, open forum, we're going to have brief open forum, two minutes or less, members in good standings, only pertains to what was discussed tonight. Let's keep it to that, and then, you know, if anybody wants to speak anything, stand up, what lake you're from, lay, platen lot number, and go from there. So do we have anybody? Tracy's going to, would like to say something.
I was just going to encourage if anybody, I've had a few statements issued, but if anybody witnessed the events that night, and they would like to issue a statement, because as we said, we have two people that we can't identify, and maybe if we get some more statements, we can get names of those other two that were involved, and get them banned and things as well. So if somebody has seen something and wants to issue a statement, please stop by the office or shoot me an email, I would appreciate it.
So what did you decide, they're banned for what, just a year? Or is it what Katie wanted, or...
So, members are banned for one year.
Can you tell us who those members were?
No. We cannot.
There will be a...
You're going to, I mean, eventually, you're going to find those out through other sources anyway, so, yeah, you're in, you're in an active investigation right now. We're not releasing any names of anybody that's involved, so that's, yeah.
Any investigation?
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to give names, and even afterwards, we're not going to give names. We'll give updates, we'll continue to give updates on the status of those, and how many are still on-ban, and how many came off as that, as that happens, but you guys, as far as the actual names that are written on those pages, no.
Can I, can, we're not on open forum yet?
We are on open forum. Cindy Spilger?
I thought you wanted, did you want to talk?
They didn't mention that, so I can't...
It's only Hidden Valley stuff tonight.
So I cannot. I will address it down the road.
Well, I mean, okay, my question is, and I know it's going to make you mad, you're going to try to cut me off, but I know it's going to happen, so. My question is, this happened at Hidden Valley, you guys have called in an executive meeting, because this is, you know, severe enough that something needed to be taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, my next question is, a year or so ago, we had an incident on the lake where a boy was airlifted out, and an ambulance was taking another child, and that was severely hurt. But you guys did not call an executive meeting for that, and let any of us know, which would have stopped the bullshit, and, you know, the lie.
So I'll tell you the biggest...
No, 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 I'm not done yet, I'm not done yet. And then, just recently, you guys had the, to deal with the pedophile out here, you guys did not call an executive meeting, special executive meeting, and then inform any of the people who lived out here. So why does this situation take precedence over a child that almost died?
So, so here's, here's why that takes precedence. So all of those situations that you, you explained right there, either happened on private property, or it was with a single private member. We're not talking an entire group of, of people out listening to live, this has affected the entire community of Hidden Valley. Let's get that, this isn't something to take lightly, or to compare to, you know, a boating accident or not. This affects the entire community. While a boating accident affects the community, the enforcement of those, the process to enforcement did not go to this length. We haven't spent five days trying to go through, you know, paperwork and process and put all of this stuff together to present to you this meeting. We didn't have to do any of that because it was one member. And you could go off of what law enforcement said with that report of that member, and that's how you could judge, and then you could go down and say, this is the rules that he broke. We're not dealing with this in case. Not only was it multiple members, it happened on association-owned property during one of our events. There is, there's a level that's not like somebody boating. This is, this is a rec event that the association has put on for all of our members to enjoy, and this happens, this takes precedence, absolutely.
Well, I'm, okay, I mean, I get what you're saying.
I appreciate your, your comments, thank you, Cindy.
My only thing is that who chooses what those...
Well, I can tell you it takes two board, I can tell you it takes two board members to call a special meeting. So you had at least two board members in this case. You might not have had two board members in the previous cases. So, that, that's the way it is. Anybody else for open forum?
(inaudible).
Becky, hold on, Becky, Becky, talk loud.
I just want to thank the board, the sheriff's department, and management for all the hard work on this, you know, especially, you know, the members that have showed up here, because that just shows that you do care, you know, even though the members that couldn't come, there's reasons why, but it does show that you do care about the community. And I just know that the board and management have put a lot of work into this, and, you know, obviously, you guys know that I'm Dave's wife, and I can tell you now that yesterday was the first day I actually had a chance to even talk to him, because he's been outside on the phone doing something with this. And you guys got to remember, these guys are all volunteers.
Yep.
The board is, the board is volunteers, and this just means that they care. You know, they care about the community.
I get that.
Cindy, Cindy, if you can't be polite, you need to go, okay?
I just want to thank the...
I was going to, I was going to...
Cindy.
Let her talk. What are you doing?
So I'm just saying I'm thanking the board for all this hard work.
Thank you.
You really do.
Does anybody else have any comments for open forum?
I do.
Okay. Justin, you wanted to say something?
I want to expand on that, and I want to thank the rec committee for all the hard work they do for these events with fundraising and things like that, and when something like this happens, it's super heartbreaking, and it's discouraging. And I want to continue to have you, if I could, continue to support them, and continue to encourage them.
I also want to thank the sheriff's department, they never hesitate to come out, and they're always, like Sheriff Martin said, always at the drop of a hat or a phone call away. I'm disappointed, I wasn't here this weekend, and I'm sad that all went down, but I think we are on the right track to make sure it never happens again, so.
I would just like to say that, you know, we've seen great things in Hidden Valley, and we're going to keep working that way, and we'll work through the problems as they come up, and, and take it as they come, and, and, you know, we all need to stick together and, and put down the violence, that's, that's all I can say. So if that's all we have, I'll take a note...
I'd like to say the same thing. I've been very encouraged by what's been happening in Hidden Valley, very unhappy about what happened on Saturday, but the Hidden Valley has really blossomed as far as events and activities and getting people involved. I, you know, kudos to them, really appreciate it.
I do have one question. I promised my wife I wouldn't ask any questions.
Can we call her and tell her?
Oh, she'll hear. Was there any control on how much alcohol was served during this, out, this event?
That, that will have future discussions, absolutely.
It was outside, and it was a...
Oh, it was outside?
It was outside. This was outside in their pavilion area.
It's like a bar fight.
A bar fight usually starts at the bar.
Yeah. Okay, well, if we don't have anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion from Mike, second from Justin, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.